Mr. Chair, this is your custom.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners meeting for May 27, 2025. Our first order of business is please stand if you are able and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, second item, agenda review. Bob?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
No motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Third item is the year-end adjustments. Candace, Sonic, our new finance director, congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good morning, thank you.
Welcome.
Candace Sonic, Finance Director. This morning, I've got some wrap-up items for our 2024 year-end audit. The first item is our operating transfers. So, most of these items are generally within the budget and approved with the adopted budget. Occasionally, we have some items that pop up during the year. So, when looking at the transfers, just to give you some examples, in the general fund, we generally transfer out investment income to some of the other programs within other funds. And one of the bigger transfers into the general fund is from the landfill, and that's for oversight of the landfill and some different administrative-type costs. Some of the other transfers would be economic development abatement for the northeast development. That would go into the Public Works Program. And we did have one correction that was in between the ditch fund and the Public Works Fund, so that was one of those non-budgeted items. So, if you have any questions on those?
Any questions on the operating transfers for 2024? Hearing none, or if there's no questions, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the operating transfers for '24. Any discussion?
That looks good.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, the next item would be the revenue and expenditure budget adjustments. On the revenue side, the general fund, we had an adjustment of 4.5 million, and that really just had to do with the ARPA funds. And obviously, on a cash basis, we received the funds in 2021 and '22, but we, you know, recognized that revenue through the full accrual method when we're actually expending it. So, that is the reason for that revenue adjustment. On the expenditure side, again, the 4.5 million would have to do with the ARPA funds being expended in '24. One of the other adjustments that affected several of the funds would have been that one-time 3% market adjustment to salaries that was approved at the very end of 2023. So, we ended up doing budget adjustments for the '24 budget for that. So, that affected several funds. For the public works funds as well, there was an adjustment having to do with some of the additional costs from the flooding that happened in June '24. And the Building and Capital Fund, some of the adjustments there were due to the public works building and some of the Department of Energy projects that the timing of those kind of required that adjustment. For the ditch fund, again, you know, depending on what projects end up happening during the year, we did an adjustment to the expenditures there. Some of that has to do with the interest and fiscal charges on internally financing the ditches as well. So, are there any questions on the revenue and expenditures adjustments?
Questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the revenue and expenditure budget adjustments for '24. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, and the last item to approve are the other financing sources and uses budget adjustment. You'll see the one, the change request for the ditch, and that really had to do with the difference between we decided to bond for CD 35 and CD 52 versus internally financing there. So, that is the item for the ditch.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the other financing sources budget adjustments for '24. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Candace.
This is our last item for the audit, so we will be wrapping that up. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, our next item on the agenda is the county ditch '25. So, welcome to the county ditch '25 repair hearing under Minnesota Statute 103E 705. Are there any changes to the agenda today? Craig?
No. We're good.
Being no changes to the agenda, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. The purpose of today's hearing is to present engineers' repair report and to receive comments from all parties affected by proposal of the repairs to county ditch '25. The order of business for the hearing will be as follows. Staff will review the jurisdictional documents, and we will hear from the engineers, staff, and then we will open it up for public comment. I will ask Craig Osserson, the Blue Earth County Drainage Coordinator, to review the jurisdictional documents at this time.
Okay. The hearing notices were mailed on May 12, 2025. Notice is posted for this hearing outside the Blue Earth County Historic Courthouse located at 204 South Fifth Street, Mankato, Minnesota, 56001. Notice of the public hearing is also published in the Mankato Free Press on May 13, 2025. Landowner information meeting was held on February 19, 2025. Engineers' advisory report was submitted to drainage staff on January 10, 2025. Part of the memo here, the purpose, "Blue Earth County Ditch '25 Watershed is approximately 1,700 acres in size, located in Decoria and McPherson Townships. Based on inspections of the county's '25 open ditch and subsurface field tile, Blue Earth County Drainage Staff consulted with engineer Mr. Chuck Brandl from ISG to develop a repair report. The repair report was developed using the drainage staff input as well as engineering survey recommendations." An informational landowner meeting was held on February 19, 2025 to discuss the proposed repair report, including costs and plans. By order on May 6, the Drainage Authority set May 27 at 9:00 a.m. for the final hearing. At today's hearing, we request that the Drainage Authority approve the draft findings and order approving of repairs of the county ditch '25, and that the engineer be ordered to repair construction plans suitable for public bidding and construction of the approved petition reroute and repairs. That's it for jurisdictional documents.
All right, thank you, Craig. Can I get a motion to accept the jurisdictional documents?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Now, I ask the ISG staff to please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record for the engineers' report.
All right, good morning. Chuck Brandl with ISG.
Jacob Mueller with ISG.
So, we'll go over the repair report. Like Craig stated, we did a survey, and we've actually done a significant amount of work on this system in the past. So, we had legal grades. We were able to figure that out fairly quickly. Just a little bit of the watershed, it's 1,768 acres, relatively flat like most of Blue Earth County's drainage watersheds, mostly clay soils, agricultural row crops. In the watershed system was established in 1909. There's 19,000 feet of open ditch, seven public tile lines, and the recent history, in 2008, the entire ditch was cleaned. At that time, there were multiple culverts that had been, that had replaced bridges, that were not set at the right elevation, and those were redone. A couple of those were under county roads, so that was a big restriction in the, in the system. Not surprising that, you know, 17, 18 years later, that we need to clean the ditch again. There's some lighter soils in this area. There have been a couple FEMA repairs, and then there was a partial abandonment for what we call the drummer wetland bank on the western side back in 2010, along with some tile repairs in 2024. So, here's a map of the watershed. The red line is the watershed boundary, so everybody inside of that, their water's getting to the open ditch. The open ditch is shown in blue. The dark black lines are the public tile. Here's the topo, and as you can see, this ditch-drained shallow lakes back 107 years ago really stands out in the topo. But the proposed project, really, we're only looking at the open ditch. We did double-check the culverts, and again, like I said, they were all checked in 2008, replaced. They're still in good shape, and they have adequate capacity. So, the side slopes, there are some failures in the system that need to be addressed, and there is a lot of vegetation in areas that need to be cleaned, which Jacob will go over. Here's just some of those photos. You can see some of the sloughing occurring, just blocking flow. Back in '08, there was no work on the very eastern end of the system, and there's a large number of trees along the ditch. One side of the ditch is accessible. The other side of the ditch is a very steep slope, so we'll go over what our recommendations are there. There are some trees growing on the side slopes, but most of the ditch just needs either vegetation or a minor cleanout, except for that very eastern end. We do have an issue with property near Trunk Highway 83. This drawing shows where the buffer for the ditch system is, and there's actually portions of gravel and LP tank that are in that area, in the buffer area. That is a problem because this is the only way to access the north side of the ditch. So, that, that needs some, need to work with that landowner on being able to get access through there. Technically, this should be a grass buffer. So, that was another observation that we did find, so.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. With all that kind of background, existing information, a good understanding of what we're working with, we can kind of start looking at what our proposed recommendation is for this system. So, in any repair project, there's kind of a few cornerstones that we base our design around. You know, first and foremost, we look at our crossings. In this case, they were all in good shape. The next thing we look at is drainage coefficient. When it comes to as constructed capacity, now again, culverts are in good shape. The cross-section of the open ditch, in fact, is a little overbuilt with sediment in many locations, so that would get cleaned out to exhibit its original constructed legal grade. The third thing is adequate protection, so we're looking at areas of erosion, outlet protection, things that could be bettered to reduce sediment load and reduce failures within the system in the future. Finally, we look at alternative BMPs. These can be things such as side inlets, storage areas, grade control structures such as rock riffle sequences. A couple of those items were incorporated into this design as well. So, what we see here is an overview of the entire scope of repairs. Again, as Chuck was saying, this involves mostly shallow ditch cleaning, scooping out those bottom six inches to two feet of sediment in the system to maintain that as constructed capacity. We're proposing a series of alternative side inlets to help prevent erosion on side slopes. Taking a bit of a closer look at some of these images, first, we're going to look at the outlet. A lot of those side slope repairs and issues that Chuck had noted in those drone imagery that we had taken occurred predominantly at the outlet. The reason for that is there's a large grade difference from the Highway 83 culvert in the system's outlet. It's very steep in that area, and it's downcut approximately five feet from legal grade in locations. Basically, what that does is destabilizes the side slopes, promotes beandering, and ultimately brings a lot of sediment into the ditch and off the side slopes. Our goal there is to place, first and foremost, remove the vegetation in the channel, and then place a rock riffle structure, which we pursued on other projects to success, to build up the bottom of that ditch and remove that grade discrepancy and promote more stability in the future. Additionally, you can see just downstream, right near the outlet, there's a band of a red on the southern border of the ditch. This is where we're proposing tree removal to gain access to the ditch. Chuck was saying earlier that we kind of have a unique scenario. Generally, the, generally, we clear trees within the entire extent of the ditch side slopes and buffer. On the northern extent, there's a very long, very steep side slope, and it just wouldn't be cost-effective or provide any greater degree of access to remove those trees. But ultimately, the, the cost would essentially outweigh the benefit of access to clear those trees. So, we aren't proposing to pursue that in this project, just that southern border to get access to the whole public system. Further upstream, in one of those isolated lakes that Chuck was mentioning, we're, we're doing a few more ASIs. Further up in the system, where there's less grade, less velocity, we're seeing significantly higher portions of sediment accumulation. The open ditch just doesn't have the energy to self-clean in that area. So, with that, you can see the, the pink, the pink line work. These are all the areas that we're proposing ditch cleaning. Again, with a couple more ASIs to just generally promote more side slope stability. Here's an example of a plan and profile. Again, this shows the system outlet where we have the greatest degree of erosion. We're proposing several side slope repairs in tandem with, with an additional solution that we worked out with Drainage Authority staff to, to install some tow drains to reduce that, set up that soil moisture content, and hopefully reduce some of that side slope failure in the future. Here's a good profile image of the rock riffle sequence. Again, the red line you see in this profile is legal grade, and the dotted black line is the existing survey grade, taken by our topographic survey staff. The rock riffle structure is just meant to build that back up to legal grade. Finally, here's a profile of Branch 1. You can see that in some areas there's upwards of two feet of sediment. A cross-section here shows our proposed goals with cleaning, again, just bringing that, that existing system back down to the original constructed level. Looking a bit into project cost, in total, all the repairs discussed are going to cost just a touch over $330,000, so that's our estimate of cost. Of that, standard open ditch cleaning is approximately $184,000 just for the main line. Branch 1 would be $45,000, and Branch 2 would be $30,000. The additional alternative side inlets are currently estimated at about $56,000. We've sent these con steps to the Blue Earth County SWCD, who are reviewing it for potential funding opportunities. So, portions of that may or may not be funded. Looking in, into a bit of our unique construction practices, we've worked in this county on a lot of alternative side inlets, a lot of them installed, success. So, again, it's just a vertical riser outside the, the buffer that will drain those shallow depressional areas into the ditch and prevent that side slope erosion. In total, we're estimating about a 33 reduction, 33% reduction in, in soil delivery into the system. So, that will also not only benefit downstream waters, but hopefully reduce the frequency that this ditch needs to be cleaned in the future. Another unique portion of this is the rock riffle sequence. Again, this is effectively a gradation of a blanket of rocks to rebuild up that structure. It, it benefits a channel in a lot of ways in that it centralizes the flow, brings it away from the side slopes, and prevents that total erosion that we're seeing. As a portion of this project, we looked into a multi-purpose drainage management plan, just to highlight potential opportunities for the system. You know, being different best management practices such as storage areas, controlled drainage, buffer contour strips, things to reduce erosion. Many of these have been incorporated into plans such as the rock riffle sequence and ASIs. Others remain available to landowners should they choose, but they're not actively pursued in this, in these repairs.
So, the ditch system is in need of repair. We have put together a cost and made it that the project is practical and feasible, and we recommend approval of the project if approved. We would put together construction plans and specifications and probably have a construction project later this year if, if we get favorable bids and contractors are available. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. At this time, we will open up the public comment portion of the hearing. If you would like to comment, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Comments from the republic are expected to be respectful and civil. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. There is a five-minute time limit. The county administrator will give you a one-minute warning and let you know when your allotted time is used. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive or not relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. Is there anyone who would like to comment on the county ditch '25 repair report? Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to comment on county ditch '25, please come to the podium. Anyone wishing to comment on county ditch '25 report, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Seeing no public comment, I will close the public portion of the hearing and bring it back to the county board. Any further discussion or questions from the county board?
Mr. Chair, no, no questions, but again, just want to thank everybody for participation in the landowner meetings. That makes these hearings much easier where we can make sure that everything is taken care of. So, the key is landowner meetings, in my opinion.
You're very well observed, yes. Thanks to Chuck and his staff for accommodating us and our staff for putting them together, and good comment. Any other comments on county ditch '25 repair? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept the engineers' report and order the final plans and specifications from the engineers for the public bidding and construction of this proceedings.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. This will conclude our county ditch '25 public hearing. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Chuck. All right, we got several other items here for some drainage. Looks like you're going to keep us busy for the next few days here, so.
Ten items here.
Yeah, let's just see if we can get through all these. So, item number five is our drainage stuff. Mr. Craig Osserson?
Okay.
Got several hearings to set up.
Yeah. First one is a setting of the hearing for county ditch '53 redetermination of benefits. Blue Earth County Ditch '53 watershed is approximately 900 benefited acres and is located in Garden City and Vernon Township. On October 8, 2024, the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority ordered redetermination of benefits. Viewers were appointed in order to create an updated benefits damages listing and viewers' report. A copy of the drafted viewers' report for the redetermination was submitted to the Blue Earth County Drainage Management Staff on February 6, 2025. Action requested today, we requesting the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority set a date of June 24, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. for the hearing on the proposed viewers' report for county ditch '53 redetermination of benefits.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for county ditch '53. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
The next item is setting the hearing for county ditch '74 redetermination of benefits. Blue Earth County Ditch '74 watershed has approximately 1,360 benefited acres and is located in Deresco Township. On October 8, 2024, the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority ordered a redetermination of benefits. Viewers were appointed in order to create an updated benefits damages listing for the viewers' report. A copy of the drafted viewers' report was for the redetermination of benefits was submitted to the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority on February 7, 2025. We are requesting the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority set a date of June 24 at 9:00 a.m. for the hearing on the proposed viewers' report for the county ditch '74 redetermination of benefits.
Okay, a motion to accept the ditch '74.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Next item is setting the hearing for county ditch '88 redetermination of benefits. The Blue Earth County Ditch '88 watershed is approximately 5,513 benefited acres and is located in Buford, Decoria, McPherson, and Meadow Townships. On October 8, 2024, the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority ordered a redetermination of benefits. Viewers were appointed in order to create an updated benefits and damages listing and viewers' report. A copy of the drafted viewers' report for the redetermination of benefits was submitted to the Blue Earth County Drainage Management Staff on February 17, 2025. Action requested, we requested, we request that Blue Earth County Drainage Authority set a date and time of June 24, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. for a hearing on the proposed viewers' report for county ditch '88 redetermination of benefits.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the county ditch '88 hearing. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Next item, setting hearing for county ditch '93 redetermination of benefits. County ditch '93 watershed is approximately 3,260 benefited acres and is located in Decoria Township. On October 8, 2024, the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority ordered a redetermination of benefits. Viewers are appointed in order to create an updated benefits and damages listing and viewers' report. A copy of the drafted viewers' report for the redetermination of benefits was submitted to the Blue Earth County Drainage Management Staff on February 16, 2025. Request the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority set a date of June 24, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. for a hearing on the proposed viewers' report for the county ditch '93 redetermination of benefits.
Thank you, Craig. County ditch '93, you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries for ditch '93 redetermination of benefits.
Okay. The next item is regarding a petition for an outlet to county ditch '16. The proposed purpose, the Blue Earth County ditch '16 watershed is approximately 2,200 acres in size and is primarily located in Mapleton Township. A petition to outlet additional lands into the county of '16 was received on September 20, 2024. On October 22, 2024, the Drainage Authority appointed engineer Charles J. Brandl of ISG to review the petition. The Drainage Authority also appointed viewer Mark Behrens to make a report with recommendations for an outlet fee and benefits for the property. The reports have been received, and we are now ready to hold a hearing on the petition. At today's meeting, we request the Drainage Authority set a hearing for the outlet petition for July 8, 2025 at 9:00 a.m.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for county ditch '16 outlet hearing. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Next item is a petition for an outlet for county ditch '35. The Blue Earth County ditch '35 watershed is approximately 3,025 acres in size and located in Mapleton Township. A petition to outlet additional acres into the county ditch '35 was received on September 20, 2024. On October 22, 2024, the Drainage Authority appointed engineer Charles J. Brandl of ISG to review the petition. The Drainage Authority was also appointed viewer Mark Behrens to make a report with recommendations for an outlet and the benefits for the property. Reports have been received, and we are now ready to hold a hearing on the petition. Today's meeting, we request the Drainage Authority set a hearing date for the outlet petition for July 8, 2025.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for county ditch '35 outlet hearing. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
The next item is setting the hearing date for county ditch 35 petition for removal of property. The county ditch 35 watershed is approximately 3,025 benefited acres and located in Mapleton Township. On September 20th, 2024, a petition for removal of benefits was received at Property Environmental Resources Staff on October 22nd, Blue Earth County Drainage Authority. By a finanzen order, appointed a viewer and an engineer to both aid in the proposed petition and give the respective updated reports for county ditch 35. A copy of the drafted viewers' report, the proposed petition for removal including updated drafted benefits and damages was submitted to Blue Earth County Drainage Management Staff on, on April 24th, 2025. We request the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority set a date of July 8th, 2025 at 9:00 AM for the hearing on the proposed petition for removal of benefits including the drafted viewers' report for county ditch 35.
Hearing the quest, got a motion to have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the county ditch 35 removal hearing. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is setting the hearing date for county ditch 57 petition for removal of property. The county ditch 57 watershed is approximately 6,000 benefited acres and located in Buford and Mapleton Township. On September 20th, 2024, a petition for removal of benefits received by the Property Environmental Resources Department Staff. On October 22nd, 2024, the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority by finanzen order appointed a viewer and an engineer to both aid in the proposed petition and give their respective updated reports for county ditch 57. A copy of the drafted viewers' report for the proposed petition for removal including updated drafted benefits and damages was submitted to the Blue Earth County Drainage Management Staff on April 24th, 2025. We request the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority set a date of July 8th, 2025 at 9:00 AM for the hearing of proposed petition for removal of benefits including the drafted viewers' report for county ditch 57.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the county ditch 57 removal hearing. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
The next item is county ditch 35 lateral extension and improvement, set an acceptance hearing date. The Blue Earth County Drainage Ditch 35 is located in Mapleton Township. Its watershed is approximately 3,000 acres. The Drainage Authority established the improvement on September 20th, September 13th, 2022. The project was split into two bid packages awarded to Hornary Construction and Kruger Excavating of Albert Lee. The Property Environmental Resources Staff received the engineer's acceptance report for this petition improvement. All contractual work has been completed by the contractors. Today, we are requesting the Drainage Authority set a contract acceptance hearing date for July 8th, 2025 at 9:00 AM of Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners rooms located in the second floor of the historic courthouse building.
I'll move it.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for county ditch 35 acceptance hearing. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And the last item for the day. County ditch 56 Branch 3 petition for reroute bid award. The bids were received for, from multiple contractors for the repairs involving petitions of county ditch portions, excuse me, portions of county ditch 56 Branch 3 located in Garden City Township. Their repairs included rerouting and installation of new HDPE tile. On Friday, May 2nd, 2025, six submissions were received for the Branch 3 repair work. The engineer's estimate for the repair work is, was, is, excuse me, $747,741. The six submitted bids were provided in the table below with the lowest accepted submitted from Selly Excavating with a lump sum bid of $640,945.75. ISG has worked with Selly Excavating on past projects with similar scope of work with positive results. ISG recommends awarding the project to Selly Excavating. We are requesting the drainage ditch 56 Drainage Authority to award the bid to Selly Excavating in the amount of $640,945.75 for the ditch, county ditch, excuse me, county ditch 56 Branch 3 repair report.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the county ditch 56 repairs. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Craig. You're going to keep us busy the next couple of months, I guess. All right, at this time, the next item on the agenda is a planning and zoning. Planning and zoning staff will be here to present their action items. This is a public hearing. Public comments will be allowed in just a moment. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and there's a five-minute limit. The county administrator will give you a one-minute warning to let you know when you have used your allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict or limit time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive or not relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. I've asked planning and zoning staff to please introduce themselves and introduce the first action item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Erickson Schaefer, Land Use Planner. This map amendment is from the April 2nd Planning Commission meeting. PC 11-25, Blue Earth County requests for review and approval of a proposed map amendment of portions of Section 33 and 34 of Danville Township. The proposal will rezone areas zoned rural residence to conservation located in part of the east half of the southeast quarter of Section 33 and part of the west half of the southwest quarter of Section 34. Staff presented the report to the Planning Commission. There was no public comment at that time. The Planning Commission suggests that the proposed map amendment will be a better use of the land considering the adjustment adjacent uses and that is unlikely the city of Minnesota Lake will expand into the area being rezoned. Following the discussion, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings prepared by staff. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Erickson. At this time, we will open up the public comment portion of the hearing. Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to comment on PC 11-25, please come to the podium. Last time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 11-25, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Hearing no public comment, I will close the public comment portion of this meeting and bring it back to the board for action. A motion to accept the report.
I'll move it.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for PC 11-25. Any discussion? Pretty straightforward. We'll have several more of these coming in the future, but appreciate your time. You have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
The next item, Mr. Chair, is PC 12-25. The applicant is Carol Crush and asks for request for review and approval of the Sea Crush Sunrise Promise subdivision replat of lots 2 and 3 of the Crush subdivision. The replat will change the lot lines of lots 2 and 3 of the Crush subdivision. The property is zoned agricultural and is in part of the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 19 in Rapid Anne Township. The property address is 17568 542nd Avenue, Good Thunder, Minnesota. At the Planning Commission, staff presented the report and the applicant was present. There was no public comment. Following the discussion from the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings prepared by staff and with the condition recommended by staff. And the board action this morning would be passage of resolution based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
All right, thank you, John. At this time, is there anyone wishing to comment on PC 12-25? Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to comment on PC 12-25? Please come to the podium. And the last time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 12-25? Please come to the podium. Hearing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the county board for action.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for PC 12-25. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Carol. Go ahead, next item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is PC 13-25 Bradley W. Caldwell and Cato Aviation LLC. The request for review and approval of an interim use permit to allow the operation of an aerial spraying and trucking business. The property is zoned light industry and is in the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 4 Buford Township. The property address is 15887 State Highway 22, Good Thunder, Minnesota. Staff presented the report to the Planning Commission. The applicant was present. There was no public comment and after discussion with, by the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings prepared by staff and with the condition recommended by staff. Board action would be passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Erickson. At this time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 13-25? Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to comment on PC 13-25? Please come to the podium. And last time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 13-25? Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Seeing and hearing no public comment, I will close the public portion of the hearing and bring it back to the county board for action. A motion? Patty, thank you, do you have a second? Any discussions? The staff. This was a nice project. I appreciate people looking, trying to utilize that area out there and it's going to be a nice asset to this area. So, congratulations to them. I have a motion and a second for PC 13-25. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. That's all you got for us, say thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Have a good day. All right, at this time, we will move on to item number seven, fiber to the Ponderosa landfill. Good morning, Carrie.
Fun stuff. Good morning, Mr. Chair.
How are you today?
I'm good, how are you all?
Good.
Good. All right, so bringing forward today, a fiber project to the Ponderosa landfill. When we originally took over operations, they had a single DSL line out there and they didn't have much more equipment out there. We've really improved security by putting some cameras out there. We've added a lot of computer equipment, printers, that sort of thing, so it really taxed what we had. So, we really, we went out and got some different bids and Consolidated came in with our best offering to get fiber to the Ponderosa. So, it's a 36-month contract with a one-time build out of $60,000. And then we are, and the best price came in with a 36-month at $600 a month, so the project is just under $82,000 total that we're asking the board to sign the contract on for Consolidated to provide fiber to the Ponderosa so that we can have adequate throughput out there.
I'll move to approve.
Okay. Got a second from Mark. Any discussion? Sounds like a good program.
Yep.
It's expensive to me, but it is what it is.
It's going to make operations out there so much better.
And that's a long ways to go.
Well, when you consider the multimillion-dollar business we got out there.
Yeah.
Right.
It's surprising we don't get to.
You know, that's, the first thing that hit me was the price of that, oh my gosh. But, we got, we got an amazing business going out there. You know, they do a great job and they need that fiber out there.
Absolutely.
So, this is getting into the weeds way further than I should even go, but I'm going to ask the question anyways. Since they're running a line out there, is there anything you can do to pick up some other small houses, individuals, or is this just going to be a line right straight to us?
It's going to be a line straight to us.
Okay.
But it's, you know, it's in their better interest to knock on the doors and ask, you know.
So somebody could connect to that line.
They would have to, I'm sure they would have to pay out of pocket to do the build like we are.
Yep.
But, I mean, that would be a contract between Consolidated and the individual.
Sure.
Curious over operations.
Which would be, which would be just positive for the.
Residents.
Residents out there to do. Get good, good fiber and.
Okay, I got a motion and a second yet? Yes, I do. To get some fiber out at the Ponderosa landfill, if there's no further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. There you go, Carrie. Good seeing you, have a good day.
You too. Thanks, Carrie.
Looks like we're moving right on down to public works. Good morning, Ryan.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Give me some time at my non-regular meeting.
Well, I didn't look into it, I just pulled up the agenda the one day. Oh, Ryan must just have something quick and then after I started reviewing the rest of the agenda and the information, it wasn't just quick.
That's where it started, Mr. Chair.
You give me a window and you know I'm going to overtake advantage of it. Unfortunately, both myself and Stefan have other obligations on June 10th and we had quite a bit of business that we're hoping to bring today, so we thought if we could get along with it today.
Good idea.
Before we go June 10th, so I'll give you back June 10th, how about that? All right, well, we'll get it moving. First action item is consideration of award for state aid project 007598037. This is for the County Road 139 Bridge Replacement Project. If you remember, we delayed bids on this or delayed consideration of these bids two weeks ago, the previous board meeting because of a little bit of a faux pas with the software through RT Vision that we use for the online bidding service. So I have a revised bid abstract or the correct bid abstract, I should say. And while that gets passed around, I'll read the letter from RT Vision. I'd be happy to share with the commissioners if they'd like a copy of it. But this is to whom it may be, to whom it may concern regarding Blue Earth County bid opening contract 252139. That's their system contract number. During a recent bid opening for contract 252139, bid vault showed the apparent low bidder as being incomplete because of quotation bid problems. Noted, they provide a screenshot with decrypting the electronic bid documents parentheses, including the non inclusion affidavit responsible contractor form 21126D. After investigating the bid problem error message noted for the contractor M&amp;K Bridge Construction Incorporated, it was noted that the documents had not been decrypted with the bid opening, causing the bid to incorrectly show an incomplete bid. Once the documents were manually prompted to be opened and decrypted, the data entered into the three electronic bid documents mass was made available and the bid was no longer quotations incomplete. RT Vision is investigating why the decryption process did not finish or complete the noted documents, however, it is known that the issue would not have been related to any bidder issue by M&amp;K Bridge Construction. With bid vault, all data is encrypted using an EC elliptic curve cryptography to ensure that the individuals with access to this server, which is an Amazon Web Services and database RT Vision, cannot access data and only the bidder can access their own bid data until the bids are open and the data is decrypted. Additionally, the comments of the electronic documents have been verified as originating from the contractor at the time that they signed the document by using, this is all jargon, but by using a SHA-512 hash of the contents. So, effectively what happened was they had a bit of a system fault that said that their documents were incomplete. It later showed that they weren't incomplete, they invest, they're still investigating why that happened. They provided us a letter documenting their process to say that the documents were not incomplete. We provided a corrected bid summary, so the one that was in the packet two weeks ago was incorrect because it did not include the M&amp;K Bridge bid. The good news is when we include the M&amp;K Bridge bid, we now have an engineer's estimate of $725,889. M&amp;K is the apparent low bidder at $625,822.92, 13.8% under the engineer's estimate. And the second bidder, Icon Constructors, $741,811.42, 2.18 over percent over the engineer's estimate. The bid is very good from M&amp;K. The bid abstract has been handed out and that will be posted online after award of the bid. I would recommend award of the bid to M&amp;K Bridge Construction. I would recommend award of the bid to M&amp;K Bridge Construction.
All right, thank you for that recommendation. What wishes the board? Have a motion? Have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second for
M&amp;K.
County Road one thirty-nine Bridge Replacement. Thank you for all that extra work on that, Ryan. I know that that has been very beneficial, having that bidding ability through the computer, but with technology, we do run into glitches. So, excited to see that it worked out all right and it was in on time and we're able to capitalize on that. So, that's a good bid.
Save the county a hundred thousand dollars.
Absolutely. It's worth looking into.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Questions or comments? Seeing and hearing none, a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right, second action item is how are we going to pay for that? And we've got MNDOT agreement number one zero five seven three one seven for state aid project zero zero seven five ninety-eight oh thirty-seven, County Road one thirty-nine Bridge Replacement. This is a local bridge replacement program funding grant in the amount of four hundred eighty-six thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars, covers one hundred percent of the bridge replacement costs and requires one hundred thirty-nine thousand one hundred ninety-seven dollars and ninety-two cents for matching local funds for roadway approach work. I would recommend approval of the local bridge replacement program grant agreement.
Okay, what are the wishes of the board?
Some move.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right, as MNDOT does, they also require approval of a resolution authorizing the county board to enter into this grant agreement, which is included in the grant agreement package. I would recommend, oh, consider, right? I would recommend approval of the resolution authorizing the board to proceed with the red agreement.
Some move.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Action item number four is consideration of MNDOT agreement number one zero five nine seven one one for state project zero zero seven five nine six zero zero one for carbon reduction program funds for the city of Eagle Lake. The city of Eagle Lake is intending to utilize the CRP federal funding to procure an EV utility vehicle for their parks and maintenance activities. These funds will be channeled through Blue Earth County as the delegated contract process agreement holder with MNDOT. We are the authorized entity to process these funds, so we'll be acting as the contracting agency for this on behalf of the city. The agreement is in your packet. I would recommend approval of this agreement.
I'll move approval. Second.
Got a motion and a second for the carbon reduction grant funds, program funds? Any discussion? Good to see Eagle Lake taking advantage of that. Thank you for accommodating them for that. Hearing no other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Action item number five is consideration of a resolution for said MNDOT agreement number one zero five nine seven one one for SP zero zero seven five nine six zero zero one for carbon reduction program funds for the city of Eagle Lake, authorizing the county to enter into this agreement with MNDOT. I recommend approval of this resolution.
Some move. Second.
Got a motion and a second for the grant agreement? All in favor say, or any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Action item number six, consideration of bid award for state aid project zero zero seven six fifteen eleven and zero zero seven six twenty-eight oh twenty-five. This is for the reconstruction of county stated highways number fifteen and twenty-eight in the city of St. Clair and including reconstruction of Shallow Drive. The engineer's estimate for the project is three million four hundred one thousand seven hundred seven dollars. The low bid was BCM Construction Incorporated, total bid three million three hundred eighty-three thousand three hundred eighty-three dollars. It's got a palindrome, I don't know, three, 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 eight. Zero point five four percent under the engineer's estimate and the second bid was WW Blacktop at three million four hundred fifty-one thousand one hundred fifty-five dollars and seventy cents or one point four five percent over the estimate. We received several bids, good bids, right on our numbers. Bolton Make who did the engineer's estimate and the design had a good, very good estimate, kind of right on. With that, we did revise the contract verbiage to, because of potential material availability concerns with respect to the sanitary and storm sewer manholes and delivery maybe not meeting the contractor's expectations, that if the contractor opens up the roadway, they're going to have to be selective of what they open up this year because they will be expected to return it to paved section over the, before the winter. If they choose to leave segments incomplete or untouched, they can open them and finish them next year, so they don't have to do it all this year. Our understanding is that BCM does intend to attack the super majority of the project this year, so that's going to be dependent again on their material availability, but I think a lot of it is certainly achievable this year. The other thing that I would note, we were counting on advanced funding, our twenty twenty-six county stated highway municipal funds for covering this project, so borrowing from twenty twenty-six to use that to pay for this project. We do need yet to pass a resolution requesting to do that, so I'll bring that in July.
Okay.
But that shouldn't be an issue. I checked with MNDOT and they have adequate, they should have adequate funding to cover it.
Okay, now we can get this rolling.
Yep, so I would recommend award of the contract to BCM.
Some move. Second.
Got a motion and a second to award the contract to BCM for the fifteen and twenty-eight project. Is there any discussion? Good job. So, this, this will be a good project for that and they're going to get all their infrastructure done underneath.
City water, sewer, force main.
So, that's awesome.
It'd be a good project.
Big project. All right, any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Action item number seven is consideration of MNDOT agreement number one zero five eight one three eight for state aid project zero zero seven six one zero dash two, zero two nine, County State Aid Highway ten Local Bridge Replacement Program Grant Agreement. This is for LBRP funding, grant amount four hundred forty-seven thousand seven hundred eighty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents for fifty percent of the bridge replacement cost of the county stated highway ten reconstruction project that is just beginning right now. This, obviously, the matching funds for the project is eight million seven hundred eleven thousand ninety-five dollars and sixty-two cents. That's for all the, half of the bridge cost and all of the roadway work with a large road reconstruction project. So, again, as a reminder, local bridge replacement program funds on county stated highways pays for fifty percent of the bridge replacement cost. County roads pays for one hundred percent of the bridge cost. So, that's why you see the differential on the two grant agreements. I would recommend approval of this grant agreement.
Move to approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right, within that agreement, there's also a resolution authorizing the county board to enter into this grant agreement, as is MNDOT's MO. I would recommend approval of said resolution as action item number eight.
Some move.
Have a second?
Second.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
You guys should both buy lottery tickets. All right, action item number nine is consideration of an electric transmission easement for Northern State's Power, AKA Excel Energy at the Rapid安County Park. This is revised easement for an alternate pole alignment for, following the June twenty twenty-four flooding. Excel is still working with the adjacent landowner who representative is in attendance here today. They have not reached an agreement yet, is my understanding. However, we've spoken and obviously the work can only happen on the county property, not on the private property without their permission. The easement language was reviewed and Jack was working with Excel on this. The revised easement, signed easement is included in the board packet for your information to make it a little bit more perhaps understandable. The diagram on the very last page that shows the previous easement in comparison to the new easement, with the new easement being shown in like the orange and the old easement being shown in the magenta is included in your packet as well. With that, I would recommend approval of the easement.
All right, thank you, Ryan.
I'll move it. Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Explain that.
Yeah.
I, I guess we're talking about re, re, putting electricity back to the park?
This is really more for the distribute, or the transmission lines that have to cross and go from the new substation that they constructed on thirty-three, crossing the park. So, this is where, the, the reason it looks like a star is because that's where the pole comes, but then they've got to have guy wiring anchors in all of those different directions to anchor the pole.
Okay, so it has nothing to do with
The power.
Power of the park or anything like that. It just has to do with their ability to get power across the county.
They would be cutting, coming across the river at the park and then
Okay.
Proceeding across the private property to the west.
Okay, any other discussion? Got a motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to information, item, project updates. The county stated highway victory, eighty-two Victory Drive Project Lawrence is nearly finished with the removals. They are working on subcutting the Main Street intersection in preparation for electrical utility installation and road base preparation, hoping to be hand paving that intersection within about three weeks, just the intersection. Cassat twenty-nine Bridge Replacement, the bridge work is completed and their Minowa is working on the approach roadway grading. Cassat nine Bridge Removal, Hoser has the west side completed with turf establishment installed. They're still hauling debris out on the east bank. The east bank will still need restoration following completion of hauling of the remaining debris. We still anticipate the work being done in mid to early June and we're still assessing liquidated damages on that until the project is complete and then we'll have, I'm sure, some challenging conversations at the end of that project. County Road one eighty-four Box Culvert Replacement, the utility relocations began a few weeks ago and are underway. The contractor plans to begin work in early June. Cassat ten from the west county line to twenty, the road was closed on May twenty-second and tree clearing work is underway. Topsoil stripping will begin this week. The twenty twenty-five batuminous overlays. Cassat thirty-nine was paved, no, we, no more than got that paved. And I got a call Friday afternoon that a diesel tanker had come up from, I believe in Faribault County, across several of our county roads, leaking diesel fuel the entire way up the county and draining across all of our county roads. So, that fresh batuminous mat, we're going to be monitoring to see what kind of damages happened to that, if any. Very frustrating. So, our crews did go and put sand down to try to absorb and minimize any environmental impacts. I'm sure we'll be working with Mr. McDermott's office to assess any financial damages punitive. The sheriff's office was involved as well. The crews will be moving to begin paving Cassat thirteen this week. Cassat five from Riverfront Drive to Summit Avenue, we received ninety percent plans from Bolton Make and will return comments for processing. We're going to hold that public open house for the possible roundabout. Right now, we're targeting July eighth, so we'll be sending a more formal notification out to the commissioners again, likely just targeting the businesses in the really close proximity to the roundabout and then issuing media releases and things of that nature to invite folks, so to see what the public feedback is with respect to that idea. Cassat fifteen and twenty-eight, we, St. Clair, we talked about the schedule and the AC advance of the twenty twenty-six Cassat municipal funding. The Cassat forty slope repair project, the advertisement for bids was placed for this Friday, June, then that'll attract to a June twenty-fifth bid opening for July eighth county board consideration. Work is anticipated to occur this fall or winter or possibly next spring. And then we do have one project still waiting to go and that's our Highway Safety Improvement Program projects. Those are federally funded and it's going to be a mixture of intersection safety treatments. So, it'll be signage, striping, things of that nature that are in that Highway Safety Program, County Road Safety Plan that we have. That's our second iteration of that and that's probably our fourth, fourth or fifth time we've, we've used these HCP funds. So, it's about a two hundred fifty thousand dollar kind of intersection treatment project. And we try to kind of stick with a consistent theme of what we're doing and we're select corridors. So, at this one, we wanted to treat intersections. So, it's, it's trying to pick kind of the low hanging fruit and make system-wide safety Maintenance activity updates, cruisers crack sealing, primarily roads that will be seal coated later this year. They're mowing shoulder cuts across the county. That should begin this week. We've been applying calcium chloride around the county. They're blading and reshaping the gravel roads in anticipation of the calcium chloride application and obviously with the rain, we've been getting, wanting to get roads bossed up. Also been cleaning several ditches due to that recent strong winds have really been a lot of wind erosion taking place out in the rural parts of the county. Tremendous amounts of sediment deposited in the ditches, so we've been doing some ditch cleaning. Also been pothole patching, tile repairs, intake, all that fun stuff.
Okay.
And so, last but not least, I do have the routine dam update included in the packet. Go through that relatively quickly here. With respect to the nine bridge update, May thirteenth, we participated in a PMT meeting with TKDA. They've revised and grown the center span of the bridge to try to keep the piers out of the river channel as we're working with BAR. The process of the, figuring out what the river channel necessitates to ensure that we don't have highly erosive flows is really requiring that, right now, that's a constriction in the river and it's going to have to be widened through that throat. And to do that, we want to keep the bridge piers out of the channel, so the, the center span has to grow, so that requires some other engineering measures. So, it's grown to about a three hundred fifty foot long center span to keep it out of the river. The, the other thing we talked about is that the bridge width has been further evaluated based on the board work session. If you remember, I think the idea was floated about out that, well, we have a fifty-two foot wide bridge, can we keep that? Originally, we were talking about a forty-eight foot bridge with ten foot shoulders and twelve foot driving lanes. And they did evaluate that request, but to add that additional width of bridge, it basically turns the bridge from a four lane into a five lane bridge in, under bridge code and design, and it necessitates an entire extra girder span, so an entire extra set of beams under the bridge, which makes the cost of the bridge go up very, I don't have it with me, but there's a memorandum that they provided and it's millions of dollars.
My.
Which, which I advise TKDA that the forty-eight foot width is more insufficient. This doesn't, doesn't necessitate that cost. So, right now, they're proceeding forward with the forty-eight foot design, which would be, again, the ten foot wide shoulders and twelve foot wide driving lanes and then the railing. They've been working with MNDOT State Aid Bridge to review the preliminary, I can't talk today, bridge design, and we're looking at having an open house meeting in August or September. May twentieth, we met with TKDA to discuss project updates. They're doing a finite element analysis of the three hundred fifty foot girder span and they're pleased with their initial results. I thought about taking that class and knew I didn't want to go into structures and decided to focus my efforts elsewhere, so I know it's, it's very detailed and it's, it's breaking it down into very little, little pieces of analysis and then stitching it all back together. So, it's very complicated structural analysis that they're performing. It's a very long iterative process in there, in the midst of it, but they said their initial glimpse at it was promising, so they're happy with what they're seeing. The grading design appears to stay in the road and park right of way on the west side of the bridge. The southeast corner of the bridge will be very tight. To stay in the right of way, additional coordination will be needed. The county will attempt to work with the landowner early to determine if the feasibility of acquisition is needed, or there may be a wall or other measures needed. So, we have had some conversations, trying to get in contact with those folks to see if we could have some preliminary conversations. Brons still cannot do the east soil boring until Hoser worldwide is out of the way with the removal activities. With respect to the dam, on April thirtieth, I spoke with Wayne Lamro from HSCM regarding the county's contemplation of the appeal of the FEMA determination memorandum for the emergency slope stabilization of the west escarpment at the dam. Obviously, we, we further discussed this issue during the May sixth twenty twenty-five county board meeting where the board decided to further forego any further legal challenge of the FEMA's determination that that was ineligible for funding. On May first, I discussed project permitting limits with our engineering staff. It's still too early to make a decision on this matter due to the pending river channel design extents. Ultimately, there's a lot of conversations need to happen with the core and the DNR on what level of river stabilization are they going to expect and require and, and what is going to be necessary. On May first, we also held a joint dam, bridge, hydraulics coordination meeting between On May first, we also held a joint dam, bridge, hydraulics coordination meeting between the bridge and dam design teams. And went through the different design iterations. Again, it, it just, they, they have to make minute adjustments and rerun their modeling and each, each one of those takes about a week. So it's a very cumbersome process. BAR has had to lengthen the project to reduce the, the slopes and reduce river velocities and shear stresses. They still need to model the interim condition with the dam in place. Um, been really pleased with how those teams are working together on this. And discussion has had on, on the FEMA project limits versus what's actual and how the permitting is going to have to be coordinated between the two projects. On May twelfth, we had participated in a FERC license surrender coordination call. Not a lot out of that. That I think the board would have interest in just a lot of coordination between the federal agencies.
So, and that was maybe my question on D one, FEMA withdrawing their request to participate as a cooperative agency. Does that really have any impact?
I, they're still gonna be involved, they still will have to have a stay because they'll be the funding agency. And I think that's partially part of it is what I got out of it. I know Bob could jump in if he got a different interpretation, but because they're the funding agency. I think they had some concerns that they possibly shouldn't be a participating agency on this because they'll have a different role. With being involved with the funding of the removal as well, but they still plan to stay involved with this, but they, they won't necessarily have their name on the, the header, if that makes sense.
Uh, uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, um, we did ask kind of a similar question. It feels like they're withdrawing, pulling back, and that concerned us. And so we pressed them on that a little bit and they, both FEMA and FERC assured us that that's not a negative. It's just something that they felt they needed to do at their levels. But they continue to commit to being on these monthly calls and coordinating efforts.
Yeah, it, it ultimately boiled down to a decision that was made at the very high executive level in Washington DC.
Thank you.
Good question. On May twelfth, we participated in another PMT meeting with BAR. We do have a draft cross section that kind of cuts through the park, through the dam of what the potential future section could look like. We're keeping that in kind of draft format just because there's so many things that are subject to change and if we release it, it could. You know, it, it, it's still subject to change, but at least it gives us something of a kind of a what could it potentially look like? Um, we've, we've drawn this on a whiteboard before and kind of just pondered it. But we wanted to kind of start getting something developed as we start infilling, um, slopes and things of that matter, showing where property lines lie. May thirteenth, I had a conversation with Jennifer Bubkey from the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources regarding the Rapid and Dam County Park and the previous. Minnesota Department of Natural Resource Recreation Grants used for that park. There are two outdoor recreation grants, one from nineteen seventy-five for the front park area and the second from two thousand four for the access road in the campground area. The terms of the grant require that the parkland be maintained as publicly accessible parkland. The grant does not require campground use. If the county desires to cease use of this land as a park, it will need to go through a conversion process where the parkland would be replaced with equally valued. Added parkland elsewhere in the county, so we'd have to basically buy another park somewhere else or convert land to convert to a park. The land could be swapped, um, land within this park could be swapped if it meets the terms of the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources conversion process. On May thirteenth, Eric Weller and I participated in an interview with the Minnesota Star Tribune regarding the flooding that has since been published. On the fourteenth, I spoke with representative for the landowners west of the dam continuing our request to cross property for conducting site assessments. On the nineteenth, we had a meeting with FEMA, uh, the county and BAR reviewing the FEMA provided damage quantities packet. It's a very large packet. Their quantities are off quite a bit from BAR's, they were using from some pretty primitive methods of calculating them. So now BAR is trying to go through and figure out how can they show what they took off of their three dimensional earthwork software? And how can they convert that into something that more antiquated that FEMA's engineers can decipher? So we're gonna work through that and evaluate their quantities and try to get FEMA up to where BAR's quantities were considerably higher and more accurate. Power generation equipment was not active during the flood event and therefore will not be eligible for reimbursement. A determination memorandum process can be pursued if the county desires to do so. Um, I would, I guess I would remind the board, you know, we didn't own the equipment when it was flooded out the first time. So I don't know if it's something we want to pursue or not, I.
Right, what do we have to pursue then? I mean, it wasn't our equipment.
Yeah.
To take claim on.
You know, it, it was, the second time it was flooded out, it was our equipment, but it wasn't operational. So I don't think, when Bob and I have to talk about this and not put words in your mouth, but I don't know that either of us think that this is a fruitful pursuit.
No, I agree.
Um, after discussion. We, we updated them on the county board disca- deter- determination not to pursue. Legal appeal of the determination memorandum for the emergency slope stabilization following the county board meeting. We discussed the fact that as the slope continues to erode with storm event and river flows due to lack of stabilization, the quantity of fill required to repair it will increase. And then we'll have to reserve it and coordinate those quantity changes with FEMA. But last but not least, on May twentieth, Eric Weller and I participated as panelists in a Minnesota Matters Mankato Forum hosted by the Minnesota Star Tribune. Down at the Mayo Convention Center and discussed the twenty twenty-four flood, um, as well as the. David and Jenny Heruska were also panelists as well as the mayor of the city of Henderson. And the most important thing we learned there was that sauerkraut days must go on. A good event. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ryan. Lot of information for everyone, does anybody have any clarifying questions or comments before we let Ryan go back to work?
Lot of good work, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too.
All right, do we want to move on or does anybody want to take a quick break till we're ready to keep going? Keep going, good. Angela, good to see you. Human Services, how are you today?
I'm doing well, thank you.
And no, no, uh, action items today, my goodness.
No, no action items. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Um, I'm Angela Youngerberg and I will be giving the Human Services report. So yes, no action items this month, very unusual for us. Um, so, uh, I do have a number of informational items though for you. And May is mental health month. And so every May, we generally try and focus our report on mental health related items. And so we'll be going through the mental health center update, adult mental health, there are a number of pages about adult mental health, there's a lot going on there. And then children's mental health as well. And each page has a little bit different flavor of what's going on. So, um, if you're open to it, Mr. Chair, I would take questions as we go along.
Okay. Thank you.
So the first page is about the mental health center statistics. So our mental health center is located over in the government center. And we provide two core services. One service is, um, psychiatry services and that is for all ten counties in our self central community based initiative. That is a mandated service that every county needs to provide, how they provide it is up to the county. Um, and we do receive significant funding from the self central community based initiative for that. We also provide therapy services and that is only to Blue Earth County residents. Um, and so we, we look unique when it comes to other mental health centers. Because oftentimes there are way more therapists on staff and only one or two medication prescribers. Because of the needs in our area and it's really difficult to get in for medication services. Our region years ago invested heavily into developing a clinic model surrounding the medication services. And our community has a lot more therapy resources available. So we provide a very minimal amount of therapy services and it's really for individuals who need the sliding fee scale, they don't have access in other places. And so that's why our model looks very, very different. Uh, the population served in twenty twenty-four is primarily serious and persistent, um, mental illness, individuals with SPMI. And so there are the definitions, they're basically individuals with serious and persistent mental illness. This is, we tend to look at it as very much a lifelong illness once diagnosed. Um, it can be very acute and very chronic, so it takes a long time. Oftentimes takes highly specialized, uh, services, um, to support individuals with SPMI. SMI is serious mental illness. And as you see in the pie chart, about seven percent of our individuals are SMI, serious mental illness. That is really the rest of the mental illness diagnoses. Um, and oftentimes a serious mental illness, it can impact someone's daily functioning. But, um, it, it, they're often able to be managed much easier as well. Um, it is less severe and impairing. And so the seven percent really represents mostly individuals in that seven percent are receiving therapy services. And those are individuals that don't have access usually due to financial means in other places in the community. And so they come to us. And so we're grateful to have that, that safety net support. The no show rate by month. Um, if you look at the twenty-five percent line, the twenty-five percent line straight across the board is when we're looking at this. Serious and persistent mental illness grouping, when it comes to mental health services. Really across the board, it's about a twenty-five percent no show rate. Because their illness really impacts their daily functioning, which also in fact impacts them being able to attend appointments. And so with a lot of services, a lot of supports and a lot of teaming, you can see that our no show rate is in most cases lower than that twenty-five percent. So in a typical clinic setting, this would not be a great no show rate. But given our mission and what we're doing, this is actually quite good. Staff, um, in September of twenty-four tried a new intervention just to see if they could change that no show rate. And the no show rate isn't so, I mean, yes, it's about business practices, but more so than anything, they want people to come to their appointments and receive the services that they need because people will be healthier. And so they did a, an intervention strategy, just changing some of their communication, changing some of their, um, interactions. And the no show rate, um, dropped down to eighteen percent. So it's a two percent change, it was pretty significant though, and so the group is very much focused on the quality improvement side. We see about twelve hundred to fifteen hundred patients a year unduplicated, but by month about six hundred and seventeen appointments occur. And about twenty-eight new people come into our programs per month. Our waitlist is for therapy, we have fourteen individuals on the waitlist for therapy. And that's pretty common for other group practices in the county and in the region. However, there are a number of, um, individual therapists that could have immediate openings or may not have any opening. So really we compare ourselves with group practices, which is, that's pretty common. All right. Next page. Adult mental health, um, this is about case management. So this is about individuals who are, have a serious and persistent mental illness. And they need or want, so sometimes voluntary, sometimes court ordered. Uh, case management services so that they can live the most, in the most healthy way in the community. You will see that caseloads have gone up, but I will say twenty twenty, in my opinion, is an effect of COVID yet that we're still seeing. So it is kind of back to normal or maybe even slightly higher, if you will. If we were to go back ten years, um, we saw this kind of ebb and flow a little bit. Twenty-four is a little higher than normal, it, it just is. Um, and we're seeing a lot of dual diagnosis, so mental illness with substance use disorder. So that, that combination is, is part of it. Um, the referrals have increased by sixty-three percent and again, part of that is, is the COVID piece. But I would say we continually hear from staff that the acuity of the cases, that of the individuals that they're working with. So the case acuity, the complexities are greater and greater and greater. And a lot of that has to do with lack of other resources. Hospitals are full. Um, oftentimes law enforcement is being turned to, to, to help with an intervention. While that may help in the moment, it creates some long term challenges for people. So we are seeing more actually forensic type, so meaning that criminally involved type of case management that's being, that, that's happening. And, and some counties have moved to a specialty caseload or on forensic case management. And that's something that we are considering possibly needing to do based on the volume. I mean, we were hoping it was a little bit of a blip, but it's becoming more of a trend. We have two intake staff and they are also the staff that do prepetition screenings that I'll talk about on the next page. But they work through all of the intakes that come in. Uh, an average case, average cases per case manager is thirty-one. And the state recommendation for this is thirty. So we're at thirty-one, which that can change on a day to day basis because we have people that in effect graduate from case management. Or they move and so their case transfers elsewhere. Or it's voluntary and they don't want to work with us anymore. So that, that turnover happens naturally, but it has been staying fairly stable at thirty-one right now. Um, that number was put into place before I was a case manager. So, um, let's just say, uh, pre-two thousands. So the, the complexity of individuals has changed, our services have changed. So we kind of take that thirty with a grain of salt, but we, it, it, it's relative. Next slide. So civil commitment as I, or excuse me, case management, as I said, is voluntary and sometimes court ordered. This team also works through the civil commitment process, which is determining whether services need to be court ordered or not. And so the process begins with this, with a prepetition screening and we have specialized staff that do these screenings and assessments. We work very closely with, with Pat's office, um, on this and are in daily communication because the, the, the volume of this is quite high. And civil commitment is required, um, is statutory, the definition, um, for civil commitment that statute uses. Is the person is a danger to themselves or others due to their mental illness or chemical dependency. And so you'll see that again, the, the, um, screening requests have gone back up again. We saw that dip with COVID. And I would say that eighty to ninety range is fairly common for us in Blue Earth County for the last ten years. Civil commitment screening requests by and large are the category is for individuals as mentally ill. But we also are seeing that chemical health involvement. Um, the mentally ill and dangerous, although it's two, those individuals take up a lot of our time because they're very, very complex and they have highly specialized needs. So, um, we, we do work extensively on those specific, uh, cases. Once we do the screening, there's an outcome and the, the pie on the right basically says, here's all the outcomes that can happen after we screen. Are we recommending, these are our recommendations and then the, if the court adopts them, a stay of commitment or a full commitment. We, it could be dismissed. The other county is sometimes we get referred that, that case and we find out that actually it belongs to another county. That's very important that we spend our time going through that. Because if the individual stays with us and we provide that case management, we also bear the costs for that individual. So we do that work on the front end to make sure that they are in fact the responsibility of Blue Earth Counties. And then they can be screened out. And so that pie chart to the right is very typical for Blue Earth County. So, um, I would say that, um, with eighty-two prepetition screening requests. Everything that you're seeing across the top is very much a typical year. It's, it's very typical. The next page shows, once they go into a stay of commitment or an actual commitment, we then follow them with case management services. And we essentially provide that supervision for their commitment and they're committed to the commissioner of human services. As of July first, they'll be committed to direct care and treatment. Cause now the DHS is in three different categories now, so that will change some. And so when you look at it, we had thirty-three full civil commitments and twenty-one stays of civil commitment ordered. And then that, you can see the type of. ordered, and in that, you can see the type of commitments that were ordered. That's 54 new case management cases that are court-ordered. Whether they want to work with us or not, we will be working with the individuals to try and help stabilize their mental health and chemical health needs. The next page is one that I don't think we've ever brought to you, and this is a page that I tend to call the Julie Moniz page. Julie Moniz is our Behavioral Health Supervisor, and supervises all of adult mental health and behavioral health services. There is a provision that allows counties to seek payment relief for hospital costs. Not all counties do it, because it is administratively burdensome. The counties, as you're aware, are responsible for payment for does-not-meet-criteria days, so a person's in a state hospital, and if they no longer meet the medical criteria to be there, counties get charged 100% of that daily rate. At Anoka, that's $2,320 a day. At a community behavioral health hospital, that is $1,989 a day, and it changes every year. Back in 2017, I worked very closely with other colleagues, and really through MICA. MICA is the one who championed this legislation. Maxa was very much involved, but MICA led the effort in 2017 to add into statute a provision which allows counties to request a review of these costs. Now, we had five criteria that we wanted to add in there. We were successful at getting four of them in, not five. The fifth one came with the really big price tag to the state's budget, and so we continue to try and get that fifth one in. But the four criteria are, if a person's does-not-meet-criteria, so they're considered DNMC, and the counties bear the cost, and direct care and treatment didn't give proper notice, so they didn't tell us that they were does-not-meet-criteria, we can seek payment relief. If they give us a notice on a holiday or weekend, we can seek payment relief, because we have no ability to respond and get the person out of the hospital on a, on a holiday or weekend. If the discharge paperwork was not done, we can seek payment relief. And if DCT and the county disagree on the discharge plan, this one's kind of vague, but we can seek payment relief. What they do is they go through a review, an entire case review, so we basically present our case, they review it, and go through that at direct care and treatment, and then make a determination using the commissioner's authority to waive costs. And sometimes, they'll say, no, this didn't happen the way you think it did, no relief. Sometimes, they'll say, yes, we're partially to blame, let's split the cost, for example. Or they can say, yep, it's entirely direct care and treatment's fault, we're going to give the county full payment relief. The fifth criteria that we were not successful at getting into that legislation back in 2017 was when there is no bed available, and the person is sitting in a direct care and treatment facility, awaiting another direct care and treatment facility, or another state placement, we have no control over that. Conceptually, our direct care and treatment partners agree with us. We talk about it frequently, they're like, there's nothing you can do. But right now, that is a $13.5 million price tag, and so to get the language in, there's, there's pieces with that. So, right now, that is not in there, but we aggressively pursue these other four. And so, what you're seeing here is from 2017 to '24, is the number of times that we requested reviews, and again, these are heavily burdensome from a supervisory standpoint, but we have saved over those years $130,000, just in Blue Earth County. I checked with our direct care and treatment partners, because I've wondered how much other counties are using this, and they're not using it nearly to the extent that we are. In fact, Blue Earth County has received one-seventh of all payments given to counties under this, or payment relief given to counties under this. So, 14% has been really because of Julie Moniz's work with this. So, this is something that we are committed to, because, because we believe that some of our administrative time can help in the long run. It also is an accountability factor on both sides, because we're able to review the cases mutually.
I just got a real quick, I want you to just follow up a little bit with that fifth item.
Yeah.
That we're trying to get, and I recall that conversation years ago, but basically, all they do is they leave the person where they're at, and we just start paying the bill?
Yes.
Is that how it works?
That's exactly.
It's that simple?
It's that simple.
Yeah, okay.
It is that simple, because they're court-ordered to go to the next placement.
And we've got no place for them to go.
We have no ability to.
And that's our responsibility now?
Yes, yep.
I do recall that conversation.
We did have a two-year relief period, these last two years, and it ends in July, for someone at Anoka awaiting forensics, and we wanted to continue that, but the session is not done, I don't know as though that will be in there. I'm not particularly hopeful, based on what I've heard, but I really wish it would be, because that will be a significant cost to counties.
Thank you.
Next slide is Second Step Clubhouse, and so, the Second Step Clubhouse is our therapeutic social recreational center for individuals with serious and persistent mental illness in Blue Earth County. There are nine of them across our region, there are many across the state. This is one way that we meet our mandate to, to provide community support program services. In lieu of providing only individual services, which can only go so far, we provide them, we provide this in a group format, where we can work with many, many more people at one time. So, in '24, we had 107 in-person participants and 13 Zoom participants, so in '24, we have 120 active members. And the Zoom piece has been very nice for individuals that may not want to have that direct social interaction, but more indirect, and that came out of COVID, so that was a very nice advancement to the clubhouse. We had 3,873 in-person member visits, so the, you see the duplicated and unduplicated counts here, and these are Blue Earth County residents that attend, and this is at the fourth floor of the Vine Building. We have a, a great pair of staff that are running the clubhouse, and this last year, they made a concerted effort to develop what they're calling a monthly fishnick, when weather permits. It's picnic and fishing, so it's using nature and other therapeutic supports, and a very cost-effective social program, and we can help people get low, very, very low-cost fishing licenses, because of some of the criteria that they, that they qualify for, and that has been a hit. People really, really like it, and we've had new members come in. So, that's just one example, they've been really focusing on connecting with nature and the therapeutic value of doing so. Lastly, children's mental health case management services. We are statutorily required to provide case management services to all children with a severe, severe emotional disturbance, who are residents of the county, and if the family requests those services, regardless of payer source or ability to pay. And so, these case management activities or case management supports look a lot like other case management supports in our other programs, however, very focused on these children that have high needs, not just them, but their families. So, that's why caseloads look a little bit different in children's mental health, because you're often working with the family structure as well. You can see on the next page, there is program data. The total caseload year-to-date is 193 individuals, and the average caseload per worker is 18.83, and so you'll see a jump for, or a decrease from '23 to '24. Just want to say thank you for the additional staff that you approved in that area. It brought our caseloads down to a much more manageable level. You'll see that the Minnesota rule dictates that 15 is the maximum, and so, while we were still above that 15, they were much, much more manageable. When your caseloads get really high like that, you're essentially doing crisis case management, which is not, not good for, you know, the individual or the staff. And you'll see that we have pending referrals, that we're continually going through that intake process. This is an area that seems to be experiencing growth over time, significant growth over time, and it's, it's a picture of the level of need of our youth in our community. And then, just the last slide highlights some accomplishments from the children's mental health. So, onboarding of three new employees, really all at once, went very, very well, and continued involvement with the Self-Central Community-Based Initiative Children's Cabinet, where they focused on the core pieces of development of a framework around developing a children's crisis stabilization center. And so, we're working, we've worked with Mayo, we're working with other counties, there's other hospitals and entities in the region that are providing funding, so hopefully, we can continue getting that Children's Crisis Center up and running. Rice County is taking the lead on the development of that, so from a management perspective, that's, we're very grateful for that. Continually, working on out-of-state placements and reducing, or hopefully eliminating, the need for that, but we do know that the state really needs to step up, the state in conjunction with the counties, we need to continually say what our needs are and what our youth's needs are, so that we can address children's needs close to home. And then, finally, the promotion of a children's mental health case manager to a program coordinator, so that was not the addition of a new FTE, but an increase in that role, which helped with the strategic planning that was, that's going on, and program analysis for that group. Any questions?
A lot. Well, Health and Human Services brings us lots of stuff.
Yeah, always.
Any questions or comments?
Good job.
Yes, thank you for all that information, and thank you for the work session information the other day.
Yeah.
You guys spent a lot of time on that, but I think it was worth it.
Happy to do so.
There's a lot of stuff we have to learn about this, so.
Yep.
Thank you very much for your report today.
Thank you, too.
All right, let's move on to administration, I think.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the county board minutes for May 6th.
Got a motion for the minutes?
So moved.
A second?
A second.
Got a motion and a second for the minutes, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Next are the bills for the three weeks indicated.
Motion for approval?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pay the bills, any discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item number 19 in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. I just have informational items for the board today. I had a resignation of a librarian, and so we initiated recruitment to refill that position, and we have filled that now with an increase in hours for him, a part-time librarian, to fill that full-time position, so resulting in the recruitment being initiated for the part-time librarian. We also have initiated recruitment to refill a social worker in our child protection area, and that was filled with a lateral transfer in that same unit within Human Services. Then, we had a resignation of a 911 telecommunicator in our dispatch area, so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. We also received a resignation of the office coordinator in the sheriff's office, and so we initiated recruitment to refill that, and that resulted in a promotion of the civil process specialist to the office coordinator. It's listed here that we've initiated recruitment to refill the civil process specialist. I would like to talk with the sheriff about that need, just to make sure, haven't had a chance to do that yet, but just as a part of our review process, now, given kind of the budget situation, I do want to have that conversation. Then, we had a resignation of a probation officer, one, in our Community Corrections Department. And then, as you noted earlier today, we had a promotion of our Assistant Finance Director, Candace Sonic, to the Finance Director, and so we have initiated recruitment to backfill that Assistant Finance Director. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have on any of those items.
Any questions or comments on Human Resources? Okay, thanks, Bob.
Then, item number 20 in your packet is a memo regarding a change order at the All Seasons Arena, relatively small one at $400 for some additional labor to install, kind of a, a buffer between the bleachers and the boards in the hockey arena, so $400 change order, and this, again, has gone through the All Seasons Arena Joint Powers Board, and they have recommended approval of this.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the change order, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item number 21 then is a memo regarding the Region One Emergency Management Joint Powers Agreement. This is a joint powers agreement that Blue Earth County has been involved with since 2005. This really is just a review that's been done by the Olmsted County Attorney's Office to review the agreement, to make sure it represents the language needed for the activity being conducted through the joint powers agreement, to making sure that it matches kind of the requirements of MCIT and statute. And so, our county attorney has also consulted on this and recommending approval here today.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the Region One Emergency Management Agreement. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
All right, then, the last item is the Financial Status Report for April 30th. You'll see that our total revenues sit at 21.2 million, and expenditures at 48.6, so obviously, we're in that period of the year where we have more expenses than revenue as we await those first half taxes. This also is a little higher kind of difference resulting from our large expenditures associated with the Public Works building that are coming through that building and equipment purchase line and the budget. Otherwise, as you look at some of the other revenue lines, our state and federal is a little below our target at this point in the year, and 17% below where we were last year. I assume that will improve, so we'll be keeping an eye on that, obviously, as that's a, a large portion of our overall budget. The transportation sales tax doesn't look as bad in this particular report, but as we watch the monthly amounts coming in through that transportation sales tax, we are seeing it slide a little bit, so we want to kind of monitor that. I hope it's not a larger kind of indicator of our local economy, but it's something that has caught some of our attention recently. On the expenditure side, our personal services, our salary and benefits are 9% higher than last year, running just slightly above our target at this point. I think some of that is timing with, well, some year-end holiday payouts, as well as the timing of the extra pay period, if you will, as we get paid bi-weekly, we have some months with three pay periods, so that should even itself out over time. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the building and equipment purchases, you see that were $9 million above where we were at this time last year. Obviously, that's related to the Public Works building project, as that project moves forward. Excuse me. Under the Enterprise Fund, then, our Ponderosa landfill, you'll see revenues are. Under the enterprise fund then, our Ponderosa landfill, you'll see revenues are at two million against expenses of about one point one million. So again, as is typical, when we don't have large cell improvements or big equipment purchases, the landfill does put money into reserves to pay for those capital needs. On the second page, the cash and investment balances, you'll see towards the top, our total available funds sit at sixty-six point five million. Our six-month operating target would be seventy-four point four million. So a little bit below there, again, partially due to the Public Works Building. Terms of our total county funds, then, we sit at a hundred and fourteen point one million, down about twelve million from the prior year. Again, as those capital purchases are showing up in the budget, we are spending down some of that reserve money. So unless there's any questions, that'd be kind of the report I would have for the board today, but I'd be happy to answer any questions on the financial status report. Any questions for Bob?
Okay. Seeing none. That brings me to the end of my agenda. Does anybody else have anything else they'd like to bring up for the good of the order before we do our reports? Okay, Kevin, I'll start with you today.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. On May 6th, after our board meeting that afternoon, participated in the JD9 meeting as well as employee recognition. May 8th was Soil and Water Conservation District meeting. May 12th, I attended our PACE committee meeting as well as listening on the AMC legislative update, was on a NACO ag policy leadership call, and participated in the Minnesota River One Watershed One Plan meeting. May 13th was our work session. May 19th, participated in the Blue Earth River One Watershed One Plan meeting. Twenty-first was another AMC ledge update call. May 23rd, participated in the CD87 landowner meeting, and then yesterday, attended some of the various Memorial Day celebrations around the county. That completes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner, Patty?
All right. I too attended the employee recognition event on the 6th. On the 7th, we had department heads. On the 8th, I had my community liaison with the forensic unit in St. Peter. On the 9th, I had a TDS meeting. On the 12th, the AMC meeting. On the 13th, the workshop. And then I headed out to the RAC meeting in, for NACO, in Rapid City.
WIR.
On the 14th, WIR. Oh, thank you. I wouldn't, no, I was on a call for RAC on the 14th.
That's right.
Then I had Region Nine board meeting on the 14th. Oh, I lost a whole week here. TDS on the 15th, and a NACO webinar on the 15th. Then I headed out to WIR on the 19th. I also sat in on the central region call and the May 21st AMC call, and that ends my report.
Busy week.
It was a busy month.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vance?
All right. Well, I have a lot of same as everybody else. Employee recognition on the 6th, department head meeting on the 7th. I had a Highway 169 quarter executive meeting on the 8th. I did the Zoom call for the AMC ledge update on the 12th, work session on the 13th. I also had the Zoom meeting for RAC on the 14th. Actually drove out to Rapid City for the WIR on the 18th, and that started on the 20th, and I ran through the 23rd when I drove back home. We had a community farm open house on the 24th, and I got to say, I'm more than proud of what they've done with the community farm. Our partnership with Living Earth has really blossomed, and they're doing an excellent job. You go out there, you can really be proud of what the county and Living Earth has done. I had also attended numerous different Memorial Day services yesterday, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mark?
Okay. On the 6th, may, you'd have the joint drainage meeting and the employee recognition on the 6th, and then on the 7th, May 7th, you'd have the Rita Advisory Committee meeting, and we had department heads after that. And May 9th, you'd have a virtual meeting on the ice arena updates, and then on the 13th, you'd have the county work session. That concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. The most items that I were at were already mentioned, the employee appreciation, the joint ditch, but planning and zoning wasn't mentioned, but we already heard about that through the regular process. I will just give you a little bit of update on our SECB finance retreat we had the other day, on Thursday, when I called in for SWCB on the way home, but they are still struggling with trying to figure out if they should get someone to have a staff person or someone to run the SECB. Right now, it's just, it's an organization that doesn't have a technical staff person, so all the committee chairs and everybody does the work. So they had the assistant commissioner there, and they did decide to, which was kind of a warm reception to hire, or try to look at hiring someone to kind of lead up that organization. So from Blue Earth County's perspective, we've been giving them a lot of pushback because they won't give us grants on a county basis. They want everything done regionally. Blue Earth County has decided not to be the regional fiscal agent for the rest of the counties just because it's not a whole lot of money that comes to the counties, and it's a lot of paperwork and work for Blue Earth County to manage that and risk with the audits. But unfortunately, our smaller communities, our smaller counties, really appreciate those smaller grants. So very frustrating, so we would like to get to that position again where we would be able to receive some grants. So had a long conversation, and they decided to move forward with hiring that person. Eric Weller and I were there, and the chief deputy were there. We're hoping this will help us a little bit. And then to fast forward a couple days, a couple weeks later, we had our ECB meeting here in Blue Earth County for the region, and the new director of ECN came down, and Eric is starting to build a rapport with them, trying to get them to give us grants on individual county bases. With all that being said, Blue Earth County doesn't want to do the administration part of the ECB board for the nine counties. We've been handling that since the inception of this group, which was twenty years, a long time ago, we've been doing all that, and so we've asked one of the other counties to step up and take that, but with the resources that everyone else has, it's been too problematic for any of them to do it. So we did get connected with the South Central EMS, Mark Griffith, who is going to do the administrative part of it. So with that, we might have an in to get back to regional granting. So we had a lot of things in works. At the end of the day, alls I can say is that we are hopeful we can get back to the grants. We actually did have on the agenda for part of the discussion, do we just dissolve the ECB from this region? And strong pushback from the group to dissolve it. They were not interested in that, but it had to be on the list. I mean, just we had to talk about everything that we had on the list. So we did talk about that at length, and we did decide to move forward with having Mark Griffith from EMS try to get something put together with Eric Weller. So that's kind of where we're at. Nobody really wanted to step up and do the work, and then we thought about making somebody volunteer to hold it, but it's kind of a complicated process, and how do you do that? And then we talked about, one county taking it over for a year, then another county taking it over, but that's problematic for training and trying to figure out how to do it, so that's where we're at with that. And then right after that meeting, we had our EMS meeting, and everything's going really well at EMS, and we did talk a little bit more about that, and so things are moving along in that direction. So I'm hoping if we can get the ECB to start funneling some of these grants down to us. Again, it doesn't help Blue Earth County, and the sheriff had some numbers that we spent thousands of dollars to administer this, and we got very small grants, but some of the other small communities do get grants that are very helpful to those communities for radios and whatnot, so we'll keep you posted on that. And then yesterday, I was out to a couple services, out to Kern Cemetery and Eagle Lake Cemetery for the Memorial Day activities. So that's the end of my report. So if there's no other business, I would entertain a motion to recess.
Move to recess.
Got a motion and a second. Got a motion and a second to recess. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We are recessed.